Ready? All right, I would like to welcome everybody out. It's come to the point in time when we start a meeting and we always like to start a meeting with an invocation of Pledge Allegiance. The invocation will be given by Reverend Alex Wilkie, a retired Baptist minister. The Pledge Allegiance will be given by Bodhi Bowman Hammer, who is a retired US Marine and with the American Legion Post 90.
Let us pray. We come before you, oh God, in all of our weakness, seeking for your strength. Though we may be far from the model that you would like us to be. Help us in all of our expenditures made this day by the commissioners. May they be needed for the day. We all know the fickleness of a market that is upon us. Let us be conservative in all that we do, each do each day. When we have in our fellowship and following the Lord, may we all be like the model that the Lord wants us to be. Thus we pray, in the name of Jesus, Lord, Master and Guide for all of our lives. Thus we pray. Amen.
Amen. So much.
All rise, please. Place the flag, your right hand over your heart, please, and join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Before we get started, gentlemen, I do have a presentation that I would like to present to you, if you don't mind.
Please.
Last year, we've turned over almost 6,000 of these children in.
Wow. Oh, great.
It's not, it's not saying that you guys hate the rhythm, but we hope that, uh, we hope that you follow them a little bit.
Those are great, thank you.
Bob?
Thank you very much.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Very kind.
We're glad to do it.
First item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve auditor-approved claims for payments for February 7th, 2018 through February 20th, 2018. Approve regular commission meeting minutes of February 6th, 2018. Approve administrative adjustments of real property. Approve administrative adjustments of personal property. And there's 20 of personal property and 11 of real property. Approve of applications for property tax abatement, um, nine of, no, nine of those, yes. Oh, and consideration for approval of memorandum of understanding, MOU, between redevelopment agency of the city of St. George and Washington County in order to clarify that the base year for Central Business District Community Development Project area in 2016.
I'll second the motion.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. The first item on our list here is we have a presentation today by the Hydrodynamic Challenge Lego Robotic Team. If you guys would like to come, come up here and show us what you've done. So why don't we do this, since there are several of you, and we'll get you on TV, why don't you come up to the mic and tell us what your name is and what school you're attending? And then we'll let you do your presentation.
Commissioners, as these guys are coming up, some of you may, guys may not know, the Lego League is a robotics thing that, that these kids obviously participate in. As part of that, they have to prepare a presentation on the assigned topic for the year. This year, the topic is hydrodynamics, so it had to be something dealing with water and how we use that in our community. And it looks like they have some information that they're prepared to come and present to you.
Oh, fantastic. Let's see, do you wanna?
How do they want to, maybe they want to look at the back of that.
You want to put it right here and face the camera and then?
Don't put either of the tables.
Tell us your name.
My name is Weston Tilby, and I attend Vista Charter School.
My name is Lily Tilby, and I also attend.
My name is Grace Chamberlain, and I attend Hurricane Intermediate School.
My name is Henry Chamberlain, and I attended Hurricane Elementary.
My name is Brianna Fisher, and I attend Hurricane Intermediate.
Great.
So we are the droids you are looking for. It's our team name. And one of our former team members, Dad, is the Assistant Operations Supervisor for the Water Conservancy District. And so he led us have a tour of the water treatment plant. And we found out that they had a problem. So we found that our problem was the search and rescue divers, as they dove down to recover lost boats. One of them had gotten his arms burned by toxic chemicals leaking from the boat's fuel. And so the neoprene, the way it work, the neoprene suits they wear, the way it works is it holds a layer of water against their skin, the diver's skin, to, so that that water stays hot and it stays with them. Except as the, as he was diving down, the suit absorbed some of the chemicals and held that against his skin. It damaged his skin and burned his arms above the elbows.
So our solution was gloves, and it's on there, there is like a few different categories. There's like green. So the charts are over there. There's four categories. Uh, Rico Del Cestal gave it to us, and he is from BSU, and there's four categories. Uh, red, yellow, orange, and green. Yellow is, well, green is the best. I believe that it is yellow, wait, no, the orange is the second best, or, well, the yellow is, the orange is, they're the best, and the red is fourth best. So there's like a whole lot of different gloves you can try out.
We decided to, as a solution, decided to get a suit that is chemical proof. Collecting donations.
We have been going around, um, asking for donations, and we have the suit cost 2,500, 2,300, and we're asking if you, we still need a thousand dollars left, and we're asking if you guys would, um, please donate, um, as much as you can.
Are there any questions?
I really like your analysis, and, uh, you know, one of the people that we've got here listening to your presentation today, guess who's here? The sheriff, and he's sitting back there in the backseat, and he has a lot of experience, and he has been a dive team member as well, and so I know this is really important and educational for all of us, but especially the sheriff is concerned about the safety of his divers. I think this is remarkable, what you've done.
So I think we just have to decide if we can help him out.
Yeah? Want to make a motion?
I, it's under a thousand dollars, so it doesn't have to come to the commission meeting, but I know we have discretion to provide the funds. Right, Eric?
Yeah, and I'm assuming it just comes out of search and rescue, things that are budgeted for the sheriff's office.
And the sheriff has given us a thumb up.
Well, with, with that, I would like to make a motion that we authorize $1,000 to this important cause.
And how, how would it, where would it go, and how would it be supervised? Is there a leader here that could answer that question for me?
Who would own this suit when it's all said and done?
Um, we didn't want to collect any money through our team, so we've just been having everyone who's donated so far give it straight to the search and rescue, because from what we understand, they run completely on donations.
Okay.
That's correct.
We've had a lot of private donations, and the city of Hurricane has also donated.
Okay, well, I would rather pledge a little personal money than county money, because the county already pays search and rescue. But Sheriff, I pledge a hundred dollars.
And I think we can make up the other dollars out of that budget to get it done.
Yep.
But we do have a motion that the county would make up the funds so we could get it. Do we need to continue forward, or I think we just have that come through as a purchase request item, doesn't it?
Draw the motion and track it and make sure that this, you know, they end up getting the funds they need and they're helped in.
Very good.
So we'll get you the suit, how's that? We'll make sure they get it. And thank you for this presentation, it was very, very good.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. Well, that was great. That's fun.
Great job.
The second item is a presentation, which is a 2018 Victims of Child Abuse Grant Application for the Children's Justice Center. Shelley, I don't see Shelley here either. You know anything about?
We did reach out to her, and she, um, just neglected to, I mean, she just forgot today that she was on the docket, so we could table it, or?
Let's just go ahead and table it.
I'd make a motion to table.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Item's tabled. Third item is purchase request and ratification of purchase requests by Jerry today.
Good afternoon. I'm, I'm here representing Ray, who's here in body, but not in voice. So, anyway, we have seven purchase orders that need to be approved. First one coming from the Council on Aging for a 25-foot ADA transit bus. This kind of fell into our laps. It was going to go to another county and found out that wasn't what they needed, so Chris was able to get ahold of it, and I think it's a pretty, pretty good deal there. The next one is from the Convention and Visitor Bureau for advertising for Discover Utah. It's a full-page ad. Oh, I think I forgot to mention the amount, the other one. The total amount of that bus is 64,577, and our, our portion is 13,690, and UDOT will pay the other balance, so 51,661.
Thank you.
Okay. Then one that, from the Convention and Visitor Bureau for Discover Utah Magazine, it's a full-page ad. This is for $11,181. The next one from the Convention Bureau is for Jane Hudson, who's working on printing of vacation planners, about 40,000. That's $18,585. Then for online marketing for the Convention Bureau, orders for OLWM LLC for marketing, online marketing for $29,350. Brittany? This other one? Oh, you were going to, Roger, one? Wanted to explain.
So the State Office of Tourism offers a program with Roger Brooks, they've contracted with him, and they've offered partnerships through the county that if the counties are willing to pay half of their, what they're calling their boot camp style events, Roger will come in and lend his expertise on various issues with the idea of making tourism better statewide. And so we are, we wanted to take advantage of that opportunity and do, um, one of the boot camps that we're looking at is to talk about how we can, um, better get people around Zion National Park, and it's kind of a follow-up to when Roger was in Springdale last year and did his community assessment. So this is kind of how do we take this information and move forward? And so that's, that's what we're asking for this time. We will get reimbursed from the state of Utah, uh, $5,250 at the end of the program. And there will actually be another one of these, probably on the next agenda, because we're planning to do another one as well. We figure as, as the state's willing to pay half of these, we should take advantage of his expertise as much as we can, as it's relevant to our county.
And it's a two-day event, right?
It is, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks.
That one is for $10,500. Then from Emergency Services, uh, there's a request, this one actually is going through the WMD grant, and it's for the Cedar City Fire Department. It's a 2018 Ram 5,500 chassis cab plus a gooseneck hitch. Comes to a total of $52,397. Then the last one comes from the sheriff's office for five 2018 Ford F-150 trucks. They're about $33,995 apiece for a total of $169,975. That's all of them.
Okay. Uh, thank you, Jerry, for the presentation, and Brittany for the clarification on the, Mr. Brooks's, uh, boot camp. I just wondered exactly what that was, and you did a good job of explaining that. I would make a motion in support of the purchase requests as presented, uh, by Jerry and explained by Brittany.
I'll second that motion.
You have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Fourth item is the Emergency Services Report by our own Sheriff, Lucifer.
Well, I understand Ray and her voice is, I've actually been, what, five days now in a row that I've had one. Still a little bit weak, but doing fine. Thank you for that presentation. It's one of those things that's a big concern every time that we send our volunteers. We've actually been working with Water Conservancy District and state parks and stuff, every time we've had a boat or a vehicle and different things that go into the water, in trying to get those removed from our water sources as quickly as possible before the chemicals and oils and things escape from them. But we have had the incidences where that oils and different substances have permeated the neoprene. I don't know, Pete, I think I'm still the only one that has the actual hazardous materials certification. We're switching everything over to where they're now using dry suits, full encapsulation, with the full face mask and stuff to protect the divers and stuff, but it is a lot more expensive dive equipment than what recreational stuff is. And getting individuals that are going through the training and certifications to be able to use all that equipment properly. With our search and rescue group, um, it's been busy. So since our last report, we've had nine additional call-outs. One of the other things that they did is they actually provided some resource safety and EMS for that three-day winter four-by-four jamboree that happened here within the county. And I mean, there were so many different people that were here participating in that. 348 hours of donated time from our volunteers to help that event go on and provide them with the resources and the necessary personnel to be able to do it. Worked very closely with the Hurricane Fire District in, with making sure that we had the right personnel out to do it. As a result of that, that group turned around and made a donation to the search and rescue group of $7,500. Very much appreciated that they are willing to give back to our community and the volunteers they're willing to help. So we've had missing people, persons on the COLOB that have gone up and gotten stuck. Uh, one that I just want to touch on is individuals that left out of Hurricane, gone up in there, kind of following their GPS and got stuck up in the snow, but on the north side of the reservoir. And started getting phone calls from family and different things that say that they're new to the area, they've only been here for about three months, and, uh, were just out, just trying to learn the community and got stuck. And we started sending out our search and rescue personnel and searched most through the day. Two of our guys have some really neat, um, equipment with their Jeeps and everything that allow them to get way up into that deep stuff. They were able to find the vehicle. These individuals were stuck pretty well, and had actually got to the point where they were starting to, um, actually write and compose their goodbye letters to their family members. They were in that much distress. They joke about seeing a certain white Jeep, and the individuals that, they said, they glowed like angels as they come over the ridge and they saw them. So it's, uh, it's been really good for our search and rescue members to be able to be involved in that and to help out. And we've assisted with an ATV, UTV accident, Sand Mountain, lost people up in the Ox Valley area of Enterprise. We spent 42 hours getting some ledge climbers off up in Bama Long, off the cliffs up there. Assisted St. George with a 48-year-old missing male that's mentally handicapped, and, uh, we're really worried about his safety, security and things, 112 man-hours on that. These guys just dropped everything they're doing to come out. Overdue subjects in Enterprise again, and then just the most recent one is injured hiker that fell, 41-year-old female that fell up in Snow Canyon. Pretty good, um, medical issues with lacerations and stuff, and kind of got wedged down in a ravine, so we had not only the high-angle team, but also, um, you know, medical team working with Ivan Santa Clara EMS and Old Cross to get her out, get her the proper attention, get her back. So with this, just in this last report, um, with the 348 hours for the winter jamboree, we're still at 632 donated man-hours from our search and rescue volunteers, just in the last month.
Wow.
I have no idea what I'd do without them.
Well, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Make sure you always tell them what we appreciate it. Number four, so on our next item is Consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2302, Resolution Approving the Execution of Agreement Between Washington County and Bowlin &amp; Collins Associates to Provide for Watershed Plan Environmental Assessment for the Warner-Draw supplemental watershed plan. I believe taught everyone, it's the county engineers here.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Tom.
Uh, we went out for proposals from engineering and environmental consultants to do this environmental assessment. Needs to be done in order for us to pursue five other projects that the NRCS has already agreed to fund and, and work on. And those five projects are flood control measures along the Gold Wash near Hurricane, irrigation water efficiency measures along the Hurricane Canal, flood control measures along the Y Drain out near the Mall Drive Bridge, vegetative measures near the Washington Dam, and flood control measures along the Warner-Draw disposal pipeline. They'll be looking at those five projects and then anything else within the watershed. It's kind of an update from a plan that was done back in, I think, the 1960s, uh, that put together a lot of the projects around the area, a lot of the flood control projects. And so we went and we asked for, uh, proposals, and we got five. Uh, we put together a group of stakeholders and got together and chosen Bowlin &amp; Collins as the best firm to do this assessment. The NRCS is willing to pay for it, 100%, so it's not anything that the county is paying for, but they'd like us to be the ministers, administrators of the contract. I'd like to recommend we approve this. Take approximately a year, hope to have it finished by the end of the year if possible. That's a not-to-exceed price of $604,973.
I had one question, just, um, how does this tie into the flood authority? This part of what they've been working on, or?
Yes, some of the projects, um, will be with the flood authority. We had a member of the flood authority technical committee on the, um, on the project selection team, because they will be involved in a lot of these. They were administrators of trying to get a grant for a couple of these projects, and so they're definitely, this will help us a great deal in extending the funding that the flood control, the flood control authority, because NRCS will be picking up the bill on a lot of that, so. It does work right into it. Some of them are flood control, other ones are, have to do with efficiency, vegetation, there's a lot of different aspects that go into the watershed, not just flood control, but a lot of different aspects.
Oh, very good. Well, there's one thing for sure, we always are going to have drought and floods. Need to prepare for both, I guess. With that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt Resolution R-2018-2302, a resolution approving the execution of an agreement between Washington County and Bowlin, Bowlin &amp; Collins Associates, Inc., to provide for watershed plan environmental assessment for the Warner-Draw supplemental watershed plan project.
I'll second.
Your motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, Matt.
Item number six, Consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2203, Resolution Approving an Agreement Between Everbridge, Inc. and Washington County for Emergency Notification Services Need.
Commissioners, this, uh, if approved, would be in addition to our current Everbridge emergency alert system that's used throughout the county. Now, that system is paid for by the members, communities that use it through the advisory committee. This, however, is a system specifically for Washington County to allow for emergency alerts within their buildings. Some of our buildings like this one that don't have an intercom system, it's hard to notify people of an emergency that's going on in progress in a timely manner. This will allow us to send that alert to devices, computers and software devices to everyone in the building to work here to let them know that there's an emergency alert in a timely manner, so that we're not trying to contact individual groups in the buildings, in the county's buildings with, by phone or in other means, it would take too much time in order to avert tragedy, so. Contract cost for this is, for the first year is $4,268.03, and that will cover nine months and will put us into our contract, current contract with Everbridge, and then it will be renewed at the same time. The Everbridge contract is renewed.
Hey, thank you, Pete. We've had a chance to look at this, and I think the edge of our buildings and things like that works in well. We live in an uncertain world at times for a lot of different reasons, that a communication system like this for alerting our employees and patrons would be very beneficial. I'd make a motion in support of Resolution R-2018-2203, a resolution approving an agreement between Everbridge, Inc. and Washington County for Emergency Notification Services.
Mr. Chairman, I'll second that motion.
Your motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Item seven, Consideration of Resolution Number R-2018-2304, Resolution Establishing an Investment Policy and Approving Discretionary Assessment Management Agreement with Morton Asset Management and Michigan.
I'd be happy to speak to that. Since David Whitehead, our clerk auditor, has been serving in place, I'm thinking for at least 10 years, he's taken the last three years to look very closely at the state's Money Management Act and different op- at the State's Money Management Act and different options available under it for responsibly taking care of and investing funds that the county does not have immediate need for, that we can let set. Now, what we've done in the past is we've pooled those funds in the Public Treasuries Investment Fund. We call that a PTIF fund. And it has paid a very nominal rate of interest. For a long time, it was about point five percent. It's a bit better than that now. The State Money Management Act specifies very strict disciplines and methodologies that any of our public funds have to be invested consistent with those guidelines. And the purpose for that is safeguarding the money that the county has entrusted or that citizens have entrusted with the county for serving a public purpose. Morton has a long and distinguished track record of working with these types of funds consistent with the Money Management Act for several other entities. And by structuring the bonds and the types of financial devices that are available, it will allow us to step into that gradually over a period of time and only invest funds that we don't have immediate need for. And they use a methodology called laddering so that as funds are stepped in, they become available month by month, generally about a year or two later. And by doing that, we're able to get a better rate of return on those funds. I've had a chance to visit with Mr. Whitehead with the individuals at Morton. I did go to look and visit with clerk auditor Hafen, but he was out when I went by this afternoon, in the early afternoon. But I would make a motion in support of Resolution R-2018-2304. And this is a resolution establishing an investment policy and approving a discretionary asset management agreement with Morton Asset Management.
I'll second that motion.
I have a motion in a second, and I'd just like to add, I know a lot of other counties like Salt Lake County, Utah County, several other counties are also utilizing their services. So we do have a motion in a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. Last item is Commissioner Report. One of you have anything you'd like to report on or share?
Well, I'd like to let everybody know the legislature's in session.
I'm still holding my breath.
Everybody hold your breath. We did have a chance to attend a meeting between our last commission meeting that Congressman Rob Bishop put together in regards to Interior Secretary Zinke's desire to locate land managers closer to the land that they manage. They are moving forward on that. They're having a robust discussion with the state. And I think it's already been kind of in the paper and media out there, but it'll be very interesting. It's a very intriguing project. And it is interesting how this administration moves fairly quickly once they decide direction they want to move.
Good, thank you. And I believe we have a meeting with the governor on Wednesday to talk about job growth in our county, so I look forward to that, too. Right. Seeing no further business, this time the mission meeting is adjourned, thank you.
Thank you all for coming.